All right, so let's get started. So 2:31, we have the board, all members of the board. We have Amy Dexter, Bob His, Jim McCollum, and Sue Galvin as attendees. And Hillary, does that mean that they need to be promoted in order to participate?
So we can unmute them, or we can promote them for their particular agenda item.
Well, maybe unmuting is fine, as long as we can hear them. All right, so item two, so we'll bring the meeting to order. Item two is the discussion approval of the moderator's request for a remote town meeting for July 28th, the special town meeting. Bob His sent a letter dated yesterday, I think it came around this morning in final form, just a small revision to yesterday's draft. Hillary, why don't you, if you could either promote or unmute Bob, so he's on board?
I'm unmuted, if you can hear me.
I can hear you, I can hear you. So this is, Bob, I believe this is the same request that was made for the June 15th town meeting, that we do the July 28th town meeting, and according to Zoom.
Yeah, my thinking is, although there are three options that towns are doing across the Commonwealth, you know, the remote like we did before, outside or indoors, the outside or indoors options at this point, I think would require taking this committee through a whole nother set of logistics and planning, which is one a lot to ask, short amount of time, and I think we just demonstrated that the remote can work. And so, given that we've got it working, the only other option, I think, would be go back to the high school auditorium, but that would be probably people nervous about going indoors, and July heat, no air conditioning, so probably unpleasant. So my thought is, let's just go remote again, following the same protocols we just followed this week.
Comments or questions from the members?
I'm fine with that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, great. Hearing none, can we have a motion on this?
I propose to approve, or I move to approve the moderator's recommendation that the town conduct a remote town meeting in conformance with the requirements set forth in Section 8 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, signed by Governor Baker on June 5th, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins. Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells. Richard, I lost.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. All right, Bob, off we go again.
Yep, just a couple of small things we need to execute. So in the warrant, we have to include the moderator's recommendation letter. I've modified the introductory, you know, welcome to town meeting notes, just to refer to the fact that we're going to go remote, assuming that this would get passed. I'll just check, we can just check with Kevin to see if you're, you have to have any other announcement, but I think we just need to probably state on the cover what the location is, and location is now going to be a Zoom webinar, 7:30 PM, details to follow. So we've probably just got to work out, how do you describe a virtual meeting when there's not a physical place? That's slightly new for the cover.
Kevin was on the line, but I think he's dropped off, so we'll just have to, oh, there he is again. Kevin, maybe we can work this out later, but Bob was just talking about the warrant and what needs to be included. His, can you hear me, Kevin? Oh, sorry. He's connecting. Kevin, are you there? Looks like, Hillary, do we expect him, is Kevin going to be on, do you think?
We do expect him, and I see him here in the panelist list too, but I can't see his audio connection, and I think it's probably just taking a while.
Okay, all right, well, Bob, I think that's something, Kevin, what we need to, what we need to include in addition, if anything, including in addition to what's in your statement.
Okay, so I'll get my letter into the warrant committee clerk, you've already got my recommendation, and then I'll leave the, whatever the announcement on the cover is, in your hands.
I actually see Kevin. Kevin, do you hear us? And if you unmute yourself, there you go.
Yeah.
Yeah, the question, Kevin, is, is there anything beyond the additional notice in Bob's moderator's letter that we need to include in the warrant? We've approved the Zoom remote meeting for July 28th, and we just need to work out what goes on the cover, and what, if anything, we need to say in addition to what's in Bob's notice.
That's correct. So I took a shot at it last night and this morning, and sent a revised copy of the warrant along with some recommendations regarding the cover page. I think we should also insert a notice that will essentially be very similar to the notice that you sent on behalf of the Select Board, Mike, in advance of the annual town meeting, as an additional page within the warrant that will satisfy the requirements under the current act regarding remote town meetings to provide notice. And then we also have to include the moderator's request in the warrant. And that's all mentioned in the notes that I made on the warrant that I sent to the warrant committee and Hillary today. So we're headed in that direction.
All right, so Bob will send his request, I'll send a modified version of the letter that I sent as well, send it into the, I guess into Lynn, right? She's accumulating all of this?
Yes, and if you want to look at what I sent, I believe I copied you on it this morning, Mike, you can, I would start with that, and then just modify that as you see fit, and send it along to the warrant committee, and they should be able to take it from there.
Okay, great, great. Okay, anything else on this?
I'm done.
So, Mr. Chair, I think we have a second motion that we've been asked, that we need to act on, I'll be happy to read it, it's, I'll move that we authorize the chair of the Select Board to approve and issue in consultation with Town Council, the Select Board's notice of remote town meeting in conformance with the requirements set forth in Section 8 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2020, signed by Governor Baker, June 5th.
Second.
Motion's been made in second, it's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins. Yes, Ms. Colin, Ms. Conlon, you're a little muted, but I got you. Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Thank you, Katie, for that, I printed out the old version of the agenda notes, so I missed that. And, all right, anything else now on item two? Okay, and just as a, to remind everyone, we're meeting today because these things are things that needed to be done today. One is, we needed to approve the remote town meeting because of the notice requirements, and items three is the, or items three and four are useful life determinations, and a bond anticipation note approval that I understand we need to do as of today. So, item three is the useful life determinations, and so Hillary, if you could unmute or promote Jim and Amy, then we can, I see Sue on the line, Sue Galvin, Sue, are you all set, do you, we approved the town meeting, I probably should have asked you if you had anything to say on the town meeting for July 28th, is that okay?
Oh, I'm just spying, no. No, I'm just listening in to record your vote.
Okay.
Okay?
If we make any mistakes.
I certainly will, but you never do, so.
All right, so Hillary, if you could promote or promote Amy and Jim, so Jim, do you want to just quickly give us a, see this one up on the useful life determination?
So, Mr. Chair, before you do that, I just need to state for the record, and for the minutes, that I'm going to be recused on this item because I work with the Towns' Bond Council, so I'm going to go on mute, and my video is off, just for the record.
Thank you, Katie, we'll call you back, we'll call you back for, actually, I think you're done until German.
Yes.
I think I am, but I'll probably just listen to the discussion.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Katie, all right. So item three is the useful life determinations, Jim, do you want to just give us the highlights of what this entails? Jimmy, you there? Oh, you're muted now, Jim, there you go. Jim? Jim? Hillary, Hillary, he's on, oh, he's holding his hand up.
Do you have permission on my end, make sure you're unmuted on your computer's microphone as well?
Looks like he's unmuted. Jim, are you there?
If you're on your town hall computer, it might not have a microphone.
Oh. Jim, we can't hear you, unfortunately.
How about Amy, can we hear Amy, Mr. Chair, I don't know if you said Amy was on board.
Yeah, she's on board, Amy, you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
All right, Jim, Jim, if you can hear me, if you could try to dial in, because apparently your town hall computer may not have a mic. So try to dial in, Jim, if you could. Yes, so Jim said, Jim sent me a text saying, yes, I think he's going to try to dial in. No, he's dialing my number now, hold on. Jim, is that you? Jim?
I just sent him the dial-in information as well.
Okay. Hey, Jim?
Mr. Chair, if it helps, I'll make a motion just to get us to the point of discussion here, someone will second it, keep moving.
Yeah, Jim, hold on, sorry, sorry, Richard, he just called.
Okay.
Jim, if you could dial into the meeting, Hillary just sent you the dial-in. Okay? Did she, did you get it? Apparently, you don't have a microphone on your town hall computer, so we couldn't hear you. Oh, okay, well, we, oh, he's at home, we couldn't hear you. I'm going to hang up, Jim, because I'm getting feedback. All right, I'm going to hang up. You all were hearing Jim in the background. Hey, Jim? Jim? All right, Richard, I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Jim, is that you, can we hear you?
All right, Mr. Chair, I'm going to make a motion just so, in terms of time here, and then, in discussion, we can, so I'll make a motion to approve the determination that the maximum useful life of the department equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the $1,102,000 portion of the borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed Article 4 in the June 15th, 2020 annual town meeting, is hereby determined pursuant to general law, Chapter 44, Section 1, Subsection 7, Subsection 1, to be as follows. Cemetery three-quarter ton pickup truck, $52,000, a 15-year useful life, DPW forestry bucket truck, $230,000, 15 years useful life, DPW radio system, $125,000, 10-year useful life, DPW traffic signal equipment, $150,000, 15 years useful life, school maintenance truck, $65,000, 10 years useful life, school auditorium lighting system, $100,000, 10 years useful life, school radio system, $130,000, 10-year useful life, fire department ship command vehicle, $60,000, 10 years useful life, Cox one-ton dump truck, $55,000, 15 years useful life, police cameras, $85,000, 10 years useful life, and sewer generator, $50,000, 15 years useful life.
Motion's been made in second. Jim, are you with us? Doesn't sound like we can hear him. Hillary, if you could try to follow up with Jim, let me text him and tell him we still can't hear you, hear him. But, Amy, do you, I think the main question for me on this is, is we're sure that this is the maximum useful life for each of these items, that's right, is that right?
So, how it works is Mass General Law states what the maximum useful life is, so for these items, they also allow the Select Board to vote to a life longer than what Mass General Law says, and that's what this is doing, that's why it's not everything in the bonding article. Like, equipment is five years, well, for buying a large piece of equipment, like a forestry bucket truck, or something like that, it lasts much longer than five years, so that's why we would ask that you would vote to extend the useful life to what's noted in here. We did go vote with Breann, she's seen it, it was in the town meeting article this past June, but we thought it would just, Bond Council recommended that we have the Select Board vote anyways, just to be sure it was transparent. You should actually have two votes, you should have the one that Mr. Wells just read, and then you should have another one from May of 2019.
That's correct. That'll be our second one, that'll be our second.
To be clear, if you compare it to the articles in the warrant, it will not be everything listed in there, because anything that's not on these, we're assuming the useful life is as stated in Mass General Laws.
Okay, I see, I see a phone, Jim, if you could unmute, Jim, is that you, are you with us?
Uh, yep, can you hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you, Jim, good to have you. Good to have you.
I had to open the screen, I don't know what's going on with my home computer.
Okay, Amy just gave us a quick little update on the useful life vote, the one for 2020 items, and I guess this is what was approved in the town meeting, and then, you know, the question was, the question I had was, we just want to make sure that these are the numbers that we want to use for the bonding, and that.
Yeah, and this was, and this was run by the Bond Council, and this is what she came back with, so the numbers are good.
Okay, all right. Other comments or questions from the members? All right, motion's been made in second, and any further discussion?
Let's vote.
All those in favor, it's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Next motion for 2019.
So, is this Article 4, or is this something I'm not seeing on my agenda, Mr. Chair?
Maybe, maybe you didn't see that, Melinda.
Yeah, I don't have it, then, go ahead, Melinda.
I make a motion to approve the determination that the maximum useful life of the departmental equipment listed below to be financed with the proceeds of the $486,457 portion of the borrowing authorized by the vote of the town passed under Article 5 at the May 6, 2019 annual town meeting, is hereby determined pursuant to GL Chapter 44, Section 7.1, to be as follows. Rooftop unit upgrades, $50,000, 15 years, DPW traffic signal improvements, $100,000, 15 years, radio replacement, Phase 3 of 3, $130,601, 10 years, sewer meter replacement, $205,856, 15 years, and I actually pulled it up, and it looks like it matches and everything, so.
Second, I don't have to.
Yep, motion's been made in seconded, comments or questions? It's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. All right, item four is approval of the bond anticipation notes. Jim, do you want to just give us a quick recap of this?
Yeah, am I still on?
You are.
Yep. Okay, we held the bond auction on Tuesday, and it was a pretty lively bond auction, we had six bids, and they ranged between 1.25 to 0.78. The winning bid was TD Bank North, so it's pretty much free money until February, and it's just, it's just, most of these, most of the money has already been spent, this is replenishing the account.
Jim, I just have one question, in our motion, in our proposed motion, it says that the notes are going to be dated June 29th, 2020, is it June 29th or June 19th?
No, it's, on June 29th is when we're being funded.
Okay, okay.
So, we sent it out to Bill Arigo at the Division of Local Services, he does all the paperwork on his end, he gets it out to TD Bank to okay it because it's a state house note, and then it will be funded on June 29th.
Okay, okay. Comments or questions from the members?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chair, if you're ready.
You're ready, I'm ready, I'm ready.
So I make a motion to award the $265,601 Tyler Milton Masters bond anticipation note stated to June 29th, 2020, maturing on February 18th, 2021, to TD Bank, at a net interest cost of 0.78%. Second.
Motion's been made in second, any further discussion? It's a roll call vote, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mr. Zulis, yes. Okay, thank you, Jim, thank you, Amy.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jim, you have everything you need?
I do, and I'll get it in the FedEx right now.
All right, go to it.
Mr. Chair, just before we adjourn?
Oh, yeah, yes, yeah, I wasn't going to adjourn, Richard, I was going to bring Katie back, yeah, no, I was just going to bring Katie back. Katie, we're finished with the bonding items.
Thank you, Mike.
So, and Richard, go ahead, I was, you go ahead.
Are we on cable, are we on Channel 8, are we on MPeg?
I don't know, Hillary?
You are live.
We're live.
Maybe Mr. Chair might be prudent to just make a note of what happened, make a comment about why we've been down, why we had to cancel, and how the town's website's been down, just for those wondering what happened, just to answer a few questions.
Yeah, it's a very good point, thank you, Richard. So, we had a meeting scheduled for Wednesday night to take up this and a number of other items, but the town website went down on, I believe, Tuesday, Tuesday afternoon, which meant that our meeting was not officially posted, because there was no way for people to access it through the website. So, so our meeting, our requirement of 48 hours' notice for a meeting was not met because the website went down, and our notice was inaccessible to residents. So as a result of that, our meeting and all meetings that were scheduled for Wednesday and Thursday were canceled, and we scheduled this meeting for today to respond to these items that are due today. So, so that's why we, that's why we did that, and then we'll have a, the next meeting that we have scheduled will be for next Wednesday, I think, I think we're, everyone's on for next Wednesday. So that's, that's why we're meeting today as opposed to Wednesday night, thank you, Richard, for that. Anything, anything further? You know, I will say, we received in today a request for outdoor seating for Abbey Park, but it's not on our agenda, and so, you know, there is no notice of that, so, you know, I don't think we have any choice but to take it up. Oh, hello? I don't think we have any choice but to take it up Wednesday, or if we want to try to, try to notice a meeting for Tuesday, to take it up, you know, we can, we can do that, but unfortunately.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You don't think that, so that was on our agenda for Wednesday, you know, two days ago, you don't think you could take that up under either, I know COVID's not on our agenda, under, on those, what do you call it, the things that she had, couldn't foreseeably seen, anticipated?
Yeah, it wasn't, that wasn't on our agenda, that, things, you know, not reasonably anticipated, because we're just.
For today.
Yeah, focusing on those two things, so I don't know, Kevin's on the line, I'm not sure that we really have any options under the open meeting law, unless, Kevin, Kevin, I don't know if you can, if you're still there, you can address it briefly.
I'm still here, Mr. Chair, I think you're restricted under the open meeting law, given that there was notice to the board in advance that Wednesday night meeting, and it was posted, the board knew about the request before Wednesday, but notwithstanding that, it's not on today's agenda, so I don't think you can, I don't think there's an emergency circumstances a result of that, because it's something the board put out more than 48 hours in advance of today's meeting.
Do we want to, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I'm with you, can we do something quick, only because Kevin and for the chair, so there were three inspections, they've all been approved, so they had to actually set the tables up for visual inspection, they did those all, fire inspection, and Board of Health, so if you drive by today, it looks like it's all set to go, and you saw the words in their application, the word desperate is in there about four times. Tuesday's the earliest we could do it?
I think that that's, the 48 hours is, I think the 48 hours, unless we, unless we try to do something on an emergency basis, I think Tuesday.
I'll do whatever you want to do, I'll make myself on the number 12, it's just one vote, I'll do whatever you want to do.
Melinda, did you have something?
I just don't know, I mean, because we would need to post by 4 today, is there any, this year? Would that, would that be possible, just to pick that up quickly? I know the restaurants could operate, not normally, but they have seating inside, if that's what that means for them.
So, just to follow up, I gave this to Michael, I met with him yesterday, just walking by, I spoke to him, just for everyone, so Abbey and Navarre are the same, as you recall, we did approve an outside seating for Navarre, they're going to waive that, they're not going to do that. There was also a request for Franklin Street, they're not going to move on that, but if they can do a combination of these six tables for outside with the limited inside that they're going to be given. They could make, sorry.
Ms. Conlon, I'm sorry, Ms. Conlon.
Mr. Chair, I think we just have to be careful not to get into too much of a discussion, since it's not on the agenda, but I think, I'm available Tuesday, but I do want to point out, we have a 6 o'clock Milton Village webinar, so we would want to do it before then, because that involves at least a couple of us, Melinda's a panelist at that.
Right.
If Susan's able to post it, then maybe late afternoon or mid-afternoon.
So Hillary and Sue, can we get something posted for 5 o'clock on Tuesday?
Mr. Chair, if I may, you won't even go in the morning, we can just dial it quick and.
Well, that.
Give them the day to be prepared.
Yeah, that wouldn't give us the 48 hours.
Okay, I got you, okay, I got it, okay.
Hillary, can we get something in to get posted for 5 o'clock on Tuesday?
I just unmuted, Sue, that's up to her.
Sue, can we do it?
Sure, as long as I get it before, you know, 5, so like 4:30, I'm not as fast as my team at posting them, so.
We'll get it to you.
Anyway.
We'll get it to you before that, Sue, I think. Hillary, can we do that?
So, Tuesday, 5:00 PM, let me just double check, Mike Lynch, can you help me, is that doable on this Zoom account, or do we have availability?
Webinar is at 6, right? Yeah.
Yes.
You should be fine.
Mr. Chair, oh, sorry.
I was just going to say, it'll be a five-minute meeting, I think.
Yeah, you should be fine.
I was just going to say, Mr. Chair, for Katie and Melinda, I would ask that this be the only item we can handle, I know we get pressure all the time, let's just do this one and get it done.
Yep, and we have a meeting Wednesday anyway, so.
Okay, good, okay.
Okay, all right, Hillary, if you could, if you could send that in to Sue as soon as you can, and Sue, if you could post, we'll go for Tuesday at 5 for the Abbey Park application. Anything, anything else?
Motion adjourned.
Motion's been made in second, roll call, that was Conlon, Ms. Collins. Motion's been made in second. Roll call that was Conlon, Ms. Collins.
Yes.
Ms. Conlon.
Yes.
Mr. Wells.
Yes.
Mr. Doyle.
Yes.
Mrs. Zulis, thank, Mr. Zulis, yes. Thank you, everyone.
Goodbye. Have a good weekend.